Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. And are there any adjustments to tonight's agenda other than with some flexibility?
Yes ma'am, I would like to move E nine and E ten to new business.
New business, number nine and number 10, you want to move it to the first two items?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm a motion to approve the agenda with the adjustments mentioned.
So moved.
A second.
All right, it's wonderful to see a little bit fuller house tonight. So we will begin with introduction of guests and we'll start right there with Ms. Bailey. Great. Great, good to see everybody. Okay, we're going to move right into director's report and I'm going to open it up to board members for questions. Sorry, we have another board member asking if we've started yet. Any questions from the board?
No, I noticed our kindergarten enrollment is down quite a bit. Do we anticipate that increasing?
We hope so. Our pre-K, our pre-K number is down right now, so we're about, usually about this time, about 100 more will hopefully show up, so.
Oh, really? Okay. They're still in the screening process?
Yes, and we're still tracking every day.
100 in pre-K? Do we have room? Okay. Okay, no, that was my only. Any other questions?
I did not.
I just had one and really, I'm not sure, it's probably a collective item. As far as in our food services, with the discussion that you, you know, read about and hear about as far as funding and everything, what if any challenges do we anticipate moving forward if, if any of the federal dollars change? With the food services. I know we're in a, a unique position because we do own ours. But I didn't know, Mr. Daley Cruz, I didn't know if you had, you know, anything, if you guys had, and Tanya. I knew it was kind of like money and operations and I thought, okay, just, just a little bit of a assurance or information for the board.
At the moment, Juan and I have been kind of keeping up with it and making sure. But we don't have anything that's really going to make a big difference in what we have because we own our own cafeteria. And of course throughout the years and all the stuff that we've been able to do and what really helps us a whole lot is we, you know, on a report, you can see there's three different schools that still do applications and you see the percentage next to them. And so we still have a lot of students that still qualify for free and reduced. And that with, with what we have in place definitely is something that throughout the years that you guys, of course, as board members, by taking over our cafeteria has really helped us a whole lot.
And so we don't anticipate from a financial standpoint of where we wouldn't be able to provide the free lunch to all of our students?
At this time.
At this point. I mean, I know, nobody has the crystal ball, but I just wondered what it was kind of looking like. Because it's certainly a wonderful thing, but I, I know that sometimes that can get real challenging.
So far, we haven't received any guidance on that or heard anything from PED or, or the FEDs on it. But we are in a good position with our cash. And so I, I think we can withstand whatever's coming our way.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Anything else? All right, we're going to move into the superintendent's updates.
I'd like to introduce three guests that we did not request tonight. And we are so excited to have not just one SRO, but three. And the partnership that we have developed with Lee County Sheriff's Office. And they're the ones that approached us and we said, yes, let's do this. And they have done an amazing job already and have just gone in. And our principals are very thankful and grateful for their service and they're getting to know the kiddos and the campuses. And they're just not staying at one campus site. Their, their commitment is to get to every site. And so I'd like for them to come up real quick so that we can introduce them. Come on deputies. And then Dr. Parker, if you would like to say something. Carrie heads up our safety team. And so she has been with me in this journey of securing our three SROs.
You know, Mrs. Q and members of the board, we got to go and meet them in their space at Lee County Sheriff's Office, which is incredible. And then had the honor of taking them and their supervisor around all of our schools. And I think that's a day that they're never going to forget. We walked and we walked and we probably got in well over 10,000 steps that day and it was so hot, but it was a beautiful day. And what is so powerful is their commitment to us and, and what they bring, two of them were SROs in Hobbs. And so they bring phenomenal experience to us and, and really have seen how we embrace, I hope they feel how we embrace our SROs and that we needed them and we want them and we're so grateful to have them. And so we appreciate the support of the board to, to let us have them because the principals feel it, the students feel it, and they are out and about. And it just feels different having them here, so we really appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
So we have a deputy, 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 deputy Ross and deputy Wagner here, all the way from Tennessee. Miss City. I'm sorry, I want to go to Tennessee. And again, Captain Roach has been working closely with us as well as sheriff and under sheriff as well. So we are so thankful and grateful to have them and I hope that you guys have felt kind of loved and taken in, so.
And absolutely part of the district. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. We'll get you some Wildcat swag to go with that, you know, so.
Like our football games and graduation, all of our extracurricular activities, they will be a part of that as well, so.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then I see a free question.
Questions from the board?
You know, south of us, Hobbs District lost one of their school board members. And so we grieve with the Hobbs School System and their board as they are grieving themselves. And found out yesterday that husband, Mr. and Mrs. Appleton have both passed away. So I do have a sympathy card there for you guys to sign and I will get that to Superintendent Strickland.
Thank you.
Our condolences to Hobbs Schools.
We absolutely enjoyed working with Peggy through the years and she will be greatly missed. And our hearts certainly go out to the Hobbs District on this. All right, if there are no other questions for the superintendent, we're going to move right into routine matters. We'll take items one through four as part of the consent agenda. Are there any questions from the board on any of those?
No, ma'am.
Hearing none? Do I hear a motion to approve items one through four?
I saw move.
Second.
All right, thank you. Next item, budget adjustments. You've been a little busy, Ms. Hutchins.
There are several budget adjustments for your approval and I stand for questions.
Okay, questions from the board?
I noticed that most of them, construction services. Under object, it says construction services. Are they all for the same construction?
Yes, for CTE.
Oh.
For our CTE project.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Not? Do I hear a motion to approve the budget adjustments as presented?
So moved.
A second.
We do not have any bids tonight nor donations, so we're going to move right on into old business. First item is second reading to consider updates to policy I-0500. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
So this is our second reading and just cleaning up the language there. And so that is all corrected and ready for your approval.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
I saw move.
Second.
Next item, second reading to consider approval of revision to policy G, sections 0050 to 1835. Over to the superintendent.
So this is the second reading for section D that we have been working on. And we made some corrections there and they have been uploaded for your viewing.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I didn't have any.
No, I just noticed a few formatting things that I can get. Does Vanessa do the formatting?
We send this off to policy services.
Okay, yeah.
But you can always, yeah, reach out to her for sure. There were just a couple of things, really more questions on a couple of them. But in G-1511, and I know that we did all this last year when we transitioned everything to PTO. But there was a reference in that second bullet to sick leave. And so I thought we need to be sure we get that cleaned up as well because it doesn't matter how many times we all look at it, there's always going to be one that we missed. Okay, yeah, so I think just getting that, and maybe it's just leave.
There's something about that sentence that correctly think that's why we left it. I don't know, because I looked at it as well.
Okay, let me look right quick. Yeah, I mean, no, that's, that's great. Let's double check.
It says during the first seven days of absence due to a job-related injury accident, the employee will be placed on personal time off, provided the employee has accumulated sufficient sick leave.
Just take out the word sick and just have leave? Okay.
Have sufficient leave?
Leave, I think. Right, right, you know, I just want it to be real clear for our employees.
Okay, good, good catch.
Okay, and then ensuring that on 1790, we did add the district's identification instead of the yellow highlight? 1790?
Yes, ma'am, that should be, yes, it's back here in the corrections. She, okay, so Ms. Vanessa, how's it highlighted to take the highlighted off when she sends it to policy services?
Okay, perfect, perfect, perfect. And then since we're on those policies, I just had a couple of quick questions. 750 and 761 that talk about staff conduct. I'm just curious, to what extent or in what method are especially our new employees, but even returning employees, we're at the beginning of the year. How are they informed of this? I, I don't really know how that's rolled out. It's the staff conduct, 1750, 1761.
So the principals, we create an overview of board policy for the principals and expect them to touch on these items. And then also this year, we have put an employee sign-off that they've read the employee handbook, which references the staff conduct as well. So it references that, that policy.
So they, they actually can see that that's written, it's got like a hyperlink?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I was just kind of curious reading through that.
And, and you know, we, we tell them that they're responsible for reading the employee handbook and being aware of board policy. And in the employee handbook, it does back reference.
Okay, okay, good.
In important areas.
Okay. And then the only other thing I wondered and really just to ask the superintendent, 1600, where it talks about staff participation in political activities with an election coming up. Do we need to ensure that every campus is aware so that somebody doesn't unknowingly?
So I will remind them, they should be aware, but I will remind them of the policy.
Okay, okay, all right. And that was really all I had on that. So like I say, a couple of them were just, since we were in that area, I wanted to ask. Anything else on those? If not, do I hear a motion to approve those sections of policy G with the noted changes?
So moved.
A second.
All right, we're going to move into new business and I think this is when we will move items nine and 10. I'm so excited that we're going to get some ETN.
You call, please, forwarded to work. The person you're trying to reach is not available.
Hi Eric, this is Demary Maker with the Lovington Schools. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, if, good afternoon. If you can hold for just a minute, I believe that we're going to be picking up, Mr. Melendez is also. So he's going, we're going to put you on hold for just a minute.
You call, please, forwarded to work. Trying to reach is not available. Have to tell him.
We can just. Okay, is he there? Who's this?
This is her.
Hey Eric, it's, it's Demary again. Sorry about that. We've not been able to connect with Mr. Melendez, so we're just going to turn it over to you to talk about the ETNs.
Absolutely. So what is before you is an necessity resolution. This is the first step in the education technology issuance process. This, this resolution is similar to what the district has, has done in the past. The, the education technology note, they are basically notifying and calling for the issuance of a leave purchase note to be placed through the state treasurer's office. And this will be paid back from property taxes that have already been collected and are on hand with the district. And the amount of the education technology note will be $500,000. We will be coming back to you at your September meeting, which we will have the final terms and interest rates on the, on the education technology note law, which is expected to be around four and a half percent. And then the bonds will close, the notes will close in mid-October and then be paid off a day later. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you very much. We're always very appreciative of this opportunity when it comes up. And so I'm going to open it up to board members for any questions they may have. Fortunately, we are familiar with this and you guys do a great job of putting it in easy-to-read language for those of us that don't do this all the time. So, questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Okay, all right, nobody seems to have any questions. Do you, do you want to also talk about the defeasance resolution?
Uh, yes, I can, I will, I can speak to that as well.
Okay.
If, if you, if you would like, I can talk about the defeasance resolution to the diploma or if you wanted to take that action on the education technology note first, whatever the question is reported.
No, we, we'll go ahead and let you do that and then that way we can do all of this pretty seamlessly.
Okay, well, very good. So similar to prior years, the district has collected excess money in the debt service account over and above the payments that the district makes on its 2021 bond. This is due to that the district has continued to maintain its $1.59 rate. Any excess collections over and above what needs to pay property taxes has been used to pay that debt off. The, the resolution that will be before you will basically authorize the partial defeasance of the district 2021 NFA loan with New Mexico Financial Authority. After the issuance of, or the defeasance of these bonds, you will, you will basically be defeating the 2031 and the 2030, through the 2030 maturity. And so the remaining of the wealth will continue to stay outstanding. We do anticipate that over the next two years, that the district will be able to fully pay off the 2021 loan and then should the district so desire, could go back to voters in 2027 for additional authorization. Specifically to this, specifically to this, again, the defeasance is being funded through money that are already on hand with, with the district, something that you're affordable, being by a set of an SRO in which these funds will then be used to defeat the maturities that you defeat and pay off with this will no longer be legal obligation of the district. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions from the board? I, I think that when we voted a few years back to, you guys did a great job of guiding us on keeping a steady tax rate to the best of our ability for our taxpayers, so it wasn't up and down. And so to be, to see that working well for us, I, I really appreciate that. Any questions from the superintendent? Okay. All right. So we're going to take, bless you, the first one. Consider approval of education technology notes necessity resolution. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
I saw move.
Second.
Okay, and the superintendent's recommendation? Okay. Okay, and the next one, consider approval of the defeasance resolution. Michelle, there's your new English word for your students tomorrow, right? Defecence? All right, and the superintendent's recommendation? Okay, questions from the board? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second. Pickleball, I'm not sure.
All right. Thank you. Both of those did pass, Eric, and again, thank you for what you do for our district and we certainly appreciate you taking the time tonight.
Absolutely, and we'll, we'll be visiting with you again in September.
Okay.
To approve education technology note. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we're going to assume it's off, all right. Okay, so now then we are going to move into first item listed, consider approval for disposition of assets.
Hi, there are two items just to be removed that are non-functioning.
Okay, nobody wants those copy or something? All right.
Is there like a copier heaven?
Copy.
Them off too?
That works.
They're in the great farm, you know, the nice farm built.
They live out their life on the pasture. All right, do I hear a motion to approve the disposition of assets presented?
I saw move.
Second.
Okay. All right. Next item, consider approval of preventative maintenance plan.
Okay, I'll turn that over to Mr. Parker. Do you guys have any questions for him?
I'm looking. You'd be surprised, some of us did.
I did, I did find, and I asked Jesse about it, that needs to be reworded on page 14, isn't it? He says, he says, no, you didn't say. It, it's worded to say sustain a monthly at or below 25% work order completion rate. He's striving to stay at 25%. No, he wants a monthly at or below 25% open work orders. And so Vanessa's going to change that work, that wording. What 75% or better work order completion rate? What seventy-five percent or better work order completion rate, so, and he said they're at, what, ninety?
About ninety-five to a hundred percent.
Okay, good job.
The maintenance is a hundred percent, reactive is about ninety, ninety-five percent, so we're doing good.
Yeah, great.
Okay, any other questions? Recommendation? Okay, thank you, Mr. Van Hooijer, appreciate what you do for us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, do I hear a motion to approve the preventative maintenance plan as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Alright, next item, consider approval for out-of-state travel for Skills USA students to travel to Washington DC. We have Ms. Alvegal Schals here, if you wanna go ahead and come up? This is exciting.
She not only, uh, represents our district and, and, but she also represents the state, so she's holding an office uh, for the state, so she has the opportunity to go to Washington DC for a week, is that correct?
Uh, for four days.
Four days?
Yes.
And to sharpen her leadership skills, uh, represent Levington, and represent the state of New Mexico. And we have her mom here, and her brother, and then Mr. Hagler, if you wanna come up and say anything. But, um, I'm asking you to approve her out-of-state travel, so you have that packet in front of you.
Yes.
Uh, the only thing I have to say is, this is a tremendous young woman, she's done a great job being our first state officer, and we're just really lucky to have a school board, and directors, and principals, and staff that'll push these programs and allow these opportunities to happen, so there's a fairly detailed plan before you, and I'll stand for any questions you may have on it.
Have you been to Washington DC before?
I have not, ma'am.
Oh, yay, you're gonna really enjoy that. Wear very comfortable shoes, very comfortable shoes, there's so much to see, and it's wonderful, so, that's fantastic. Any questions from the board?
I don't.
And Ms. Bagley's going with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, wear comfortable shoes, Ms. Bagley.
I was confused, I'm sorry, there's Friday, September nineteenth, uh, state in Atlanta, Georgia, or is this just?
So is it highlighted in yellow, is that what you're?
Yeah.
Okay, so those are, those were pulled directly from our itinerary to nationals this summer. We have not booked flights yet.
Oh, okay.
Um, so once that happens, everything that's highlighted there, both on that itinerary and in the budget itself, everything in yellow will be updated with new numbers once we get that data.
Oh, okay.
But I don't believe we have flights booked yet, we're waiting on this approval, so then once that flight's booked, I'll be able to put all the flight numbers in and all the times for that travel.
Okay, maybe they can do that J S X.
Yeah.
That would really go, sorry. Alright, any other questions from the board?
No, I just wanna add, we're very thankful that we have someone of your caliber represented.
So proud of you, and thank you for doing what you do for our district, so, that'll be exciting, very exciting. Superintendent's recommendation? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve out-of-state travel for our students?
A second.
Take pictures.
Now, have a great time. Thank you.
Good job.
What an exciting moment for students. Alright, next item, consider approval and adoption of the athletic activity handbook.
So, this is our second reading, and Mr. Moran has done a great job of cleaning up and, uh, getting rid of the redundancy that was happening in the book, and so we both stand for any questions you might have.
Questions from the board?
I had a couple, just clarifying things, on page, I mean notes. I like the little note deal on this, by the way.
I do too, it's kinda nice.
Um, on page twenty-five.
Do you have it in front of you?
I bet you probably gotta memorize, don't you? We'll see. Page twenty-five.
Get the Rolodex going.
Now, this is just where it's talking about the, uh, sixth graders.
Yes.
Um, participation. Are we, do we want to list the other sports in there? Should we list the other sports in there, it just has volleyball, basketball, and track?
The appendix lists the border conference sports and the eligibility based on border conference rules.
Yes.
Right, I just, I just want it to be very clear as to what is approved to, and so, I, I know that it said that in the appendix, but...
Are you saying?
It doesn't say anywhere here that...
Which, which section are you in?
Page twenty-five?
Yeah, page twenty-five, it's number one.
Number one?
I'm just saying it doesn't, like, I don't know why we wouldn't list cheer, if it lists cheer in the appendix, why would we not list? Cause we list volleyball, basketball, and track in the appendix, you know what I mean?
There's pro cheer in there?
Yeah, I'm just saying, and then it's...
And, and really just repeat that same, same sentence that you've got, and I do like that appendix? So maybe just repeat, uh, if I'm understanding you correctly, just duplicate that reference to, uh, cheer for those two bullets and add it in to that section, is that what?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I'm saying, but, cause the appendix is clear, I feel like, but in the appendix, it doesn't list.
So just add cheer to that number one?
Yes, sir. I think that makes...
That's true, you could just add it there, because then it goes into more detail as you put in there, see the appendix.
More, I'd rather put it once.
Yeah, thank you, I like that.
And then I have another question, and this is just, uh, um, on the appendix. Cause on page twenty-five, it says participants, sixth graders can participate in volleyball, cheer, track, whatever it said, but, right, basketball, volleyball, and cheer, I guess? But then on the appendix, it doesn't say anything about on the participants, is it just because that's specific to the border conference? I assume.
Border con, the district's take is that sixth graders may participate. Border Conference does not want that, Border Conference wants eighth grade only participating at the Border Conference level. So our sixth graders are able to participate in intramurals, but not on the Border Conference team. If they do participate in the Border Conference team, we are not eligible for...
You have to note that for the...
As well as seventh graders.
Seventh graders is what?
Right, right, sixth and seventh, if they participate in those, then, okay.
Right, and we have to make that determina- determination before the season begins.
Right.
So we have to tell the Border Conference, yes, we're allowing sixth and seventh graders to play, which means we will not participate in a tournament, or we say, we're gonna participate in the tournament and go by the rules.
Okay.
And my personal take is, we try to win that tournament.
Yes, sir. Okay, yeah, that, that's all I had there, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Superintendent's recommendation? Alright, Mr. Moore, I'd thank you for your work on this, I know it's a big, big project, so.
That's fine.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the athletic and activity handbook as presented tonight?
So moved.
A second.
Okay. Next item, consider approval of the MOU for non-student participation in Levington Municipal School extracurricular activities.
Um, so this is an MOU that we brought before the board last year, and, uh, we renew it every year. Um, while it is a parent's choice to attend public or private school, uh, we allow our private, the private student, the private school students to attend our extracurricular activities, which is athletics and activities. And the max is three that they can participate in. I'd like to propose a flat fee per activity, number one, we would make it easier on our business department. Um, and it would, it would not have to be a surprise every year, and Hill Press, which is our school right now that we have in Levington, would be able to plan ahead of time to be able to tell their parents what that fee's gonna be. Uh, we do not charge the parents, we charge the school for the involvement in our activities. And so, um, if the board approves, then I'll make the adjustments to the MOU, I will personally deliver it to Ms. Whitman and, um, have a conversation with her of the adjustment that we have made.
So you'll change, under payment schedule, that first paragraph, that will be changed to, instead of a cost differential factor, in accordance, it will be five hundred dollars per student, per activity, up to three, okay?
And we would need to change the second one too, because it references shall be equal to the amount. But then you could just eliminate that part, and it does say, one student, maximum of three activities.
It, it would just be, um, fair communication and relation with that school. Um, and as we're waiting on the numbers, and we're waiting to the end to bill, and I just think it'd just be better for the parents and that private school, and for our, our school district as well, just to know. Now, if at some point, um, the numbers are very skewed, then we'll come back and revisit that, but this is, I think would be pretty fair.
And, and they have to have their own, um, uh, physical and...
They have to follow all of the rules of the NMNA, and these are just activities that are sanctioned by the NMNA.
Yes.
And they have to be eligible, all those things.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Is that what the fee will be, or do you know that, or are you still trying to figure that out? It'll change from year to year? Yeah.
This would just be that they would know ahead of time.
Sure. Okay. I like it.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, it not being up and down in all of the places.
For planning on both sides, you know? Um, and that way, how many students do we have currently, or do you, and I know you may not have a solid number?
Right now, um, there was four on my spreadsheet.
Okay, okay.
Private school students.
And once, if, if I understand correctly, once the teams are set, then if the student decides to quit, the, the school would still owe the district?
That is correct.
Yeah, but those first couple of weeks when team tryouts are happening, if they decide that's not their thing, then, but it, once the teams are set, if the student chooses to quit, okay?
They would still have, they're still held accountable for the fee.
Alright. Okay, if there's no other questions, do I hear a motion to approve the MOU as presented?
Uh, uh, move, I so moved.
Second.
Next item, board approval and review of the school improvement plan for New Hope High School.
Okay, um, so, first of all, I'd like to thank, um, Ms. Stevens and Mr. Riffel, and Ms. Hutchins, uh, for working on this large document. Uh, we're excited and committed to moving, uh, New Hope High School forward, and this is a piece of this puzzle. Um, this portion is in, um, this portion that you were looking at has to have school board approval. And, uh, we did speak with Ms. Maker on this, and I believe that everyone hopefully has had a chance to see that. But I do have Ms. Stevens here that could answer any of those questions that you might have of... To the document.
Questions for Stephanie?
I do not have any.
This, and this is just my curiosity, and, number two, under number one, number two, ensuring sustainability through str- strategic plans, um, it says such as the navigator pilot program, is that one of the online?
So, this year, um, the NMPED has put out where there's a navigator pilot. The navigator pilot is a, an individual that we currently employ, it's Mr. or Dr. Riffel. He, um, will help New Hope High School ensure that they're meeting the criteria of their strategic plan, of their annual plan that they submit to, um, to PED. What's included in that plan goes on in Invisitas for the public to see, so it's, what is our desired outcome? How are we going to meet that outcome, how are we going to measure that outcome? And so, um, both the application that you, the portion that you have in front of you, and the dash plan have to be approved by PED before the funding is released, and so that navigator pilot kind of works as the liaison to help make sure that's happening.
Okay.
And a portion of his salary would be paid out of that two-four-one-nine-oh fund that that comes out of.
Okay.
Other questions? I, I think we have to commend the work that Ms. Hutchins is doing over there, she is diligent about really offering the best opportunity for every one of our students that, you know, through different circumstances, learn differently, have different situations, and she's doing a great job, I'm sorry she's not here tonight, but I imagine she's got plenty of other things she's doing, but please pass that along, she, she's doing a great job with those students and her staff, so. Alright, thank you, Ms. Stevens, do I hear a motion to approve the school improvement plan for New Hope High School?
I'll move.
I'll second. Okay, next item, consider approval for request of donation from the Levington Youth Sports Association.
Um, the Levington Youth Sports Association has done a couple things, within our district donated some things, and what they are asking is, um, permission to update the Love Street, uh, complex, field sports complex, and they are wanting to put in some scoreboards, and so before they can even do that, it has to have your approval.
That's great.
And they will be permanent.
Okay, I'm curious, I've heard rumors that the city's wanting to build a whole new, different complex out behind the new Maverick. If they do that, is the Levington Youth Sports Program still gonna use the Love Street?
This is the first I've heard of this, I don't know.
But the scoreboards would, they, they, they stay there, because they are part of the property.
Why put them up if nobody's gonna use it?
I, I would have to think that at this point, it's...
It's so far down the road.
Right, right, that's what, they wanna, that's what I'm thinking, I, you know, I think we've all heard rumblings, but it's so far down, yeah.
So that's, it's not in the near future?
Not that, not that I've...
I, I have no idea, but this would be considered...
I'm sure social media knows.
So it becomes property of Levington Schools.
Do you have any idea what they will be, what they'll look like, or any of that?
Um, I do know that she's wanting, or they are wanting it for softball, soccer.
Okay.
Baseball.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't mind them putting them up, I just thought, are they gonna wanna take them when they go?
It becomes part of the property, they would have to come and request that.
So what will happen is if you guys approve this, then it will be coming back up on the agenda in September as a donation.
Okay.
But right now, they need approval to move forward.
Okay.
For the scoreboards.
Okay, okay, great.
I mean, this is, I just would make sure they are nice, I guess, you know what I mean, like, quality, I, I don't, you know what I mean? I don't wanna put some...
To, to what end do our, uh, operations and maintenance people have connection with that? Not to add to your plate, but, I mean, just, I, I agree with what you're saying, I do.
I do, and I do remember that was a concern when we did this deal with the city, or with the sports group, whoever it was that we did, the MOU, or whatever it was to use that, but that was a concern of...
And I think it states in there, like, it's, it's kind of restricted on what can be placed on there, but I, I'm without looking at it.
Right.
Mr. De La Cruz and Mr. Fisher.
So my response would be that they would need to get with, uh, Mr. Ben Huser, uh, on that, and, uh, Mr. De La Cruz, you know, because they would need to look at that, because it is on our property.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, 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 good.
Well, I think that would be the only ask, is to, for them to be sure and coordinate with, with these guys.
Okay.
And I can let, uh, Ms. Taylor know now.
That's great.
You know, and I do wanna say that the Levington Youth Sports Organization has worked really hard to partner with us, and we see them as a feeder program, really, into our sports.
No, I agree, I, I think it's a good thing.
That's great. That's great, so you anticipate that in September, they'll come back with their presentation for the don, or just to, for approval on the donation?
They will be in the donation section, yes.
Great.
So I will reach out to Ms. Taylor and, um, go through the process.
Okay.
I went out to watch some of the youth soccer this summer, and holy cow, there were a lot of kids.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the request for the donation from the Levington Youth Sports Association?
So moved.
A second. Okay, next item, consider approval of finalized exhibit J forty-six thirty-two.
Okay, this is a, a discipline matrix, and, uh, this was sent to us by Policy Services that, uh, we needed to, um, update this exhibit, so we're just bringing it to you, uh, for your viewing of some information.
Okay. Questions from the board?
So this is the updated version, I assume?
Yes.
Because initially, I don't think all the little boxes were filled in completely, that's the change, okay. I do like the way it reads in the matrix, it's a little easier, so. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, exhibit J forty-six thirty-two?
So moved.
A second. Okay. All right, thank you. Now the next item would be the first reading to consider approval of update to policy I seventy-four fifty.
This is basically an addition to the policy for graduation exercises, um, Senate Bill one sixty-three, I believe. Um, yeah, Senate Bill one sixty-three, uh, passed this last spring, and it's, um, speaking about, um, Native American, um, dress, I guess, at graduation, so, um, we needed to put it into policy, so it's right there for you under graduation exercises, I seventy-four fifty, for your approval.
And it is first reading, so if you look through it and see anything, but I think it's pretty much pulled verbatim from the statute.
Right, it is word for word.
All right.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and moving into the next item, first reading to consider approval of policy advisories, two-seventy to two-seventy-two.
Yes, so, um, the first part of this document is talking about, um, addressing the parents' rights to inspect instructional materials. And I know that every year that we have a new adoption, um, Ms. Stevens has headed that up, and we um, opened that up to the public to come look at the instructional materials, and we hold that for several days uh, for them to come view, so we are in compliance with that. There is also three policy advisories attached to this. Um, and right now, the, um, NMSBA, Mexico School Association, is not asking, they're not making changes. They're just wanting you to look at I fifty-two sixty-one for input. And, um, the policy advisories, two-seventy, two-seventy-one is about, um, technology, well, two-seventy is about copyright compliance. And then two-seventy-one is about, um, adding artificial intelligence language to the technology resources and instruction. And they're also adding it into the referenced policies. Policy advisory two-seventy-two is new, and it's a policy on the use of artificial intelligence. So three policy advisories, and then just to look at I fifty-two sixty-one, if you want to add input to that one.
But I think we know that, um, as AI becomes a, a more embedded part of the instructional world, there'll be adjustments, I think this is definitely gonna be a fluid document, so I'm hoping as, as it moves into more and more, that, I mean, we've got great staff, that they can give great feedback on what's working and where the challenges are, and then that can help us as, as we make recommendations, so.
And Ms. Maker, we are already ahead of the game, we have already been doing this for the last two years. We've even brought in trainers, um, to train our staff on how to use AI appropriately, use it as a tool in the classroom, so, and we've, um, worked really hard with our principals on this, on language.
On a side note, I don't know if any of you saw the article that J.C. Homer wrote for the newspaper. Um, it was in Albuquerque and Santa Fe Papers this weekend, and it was very good on exactly what you said, AI as a tool, but the teacher is the critical piece in there, and she did a good job with that, so. Uh, that goes hand in hand with what we're looking at, as we certainly wanna service our kids in the best way, so. Again, it's a first reading, anything comes up, please don't hesitate to reach out to the superintendent. Okay, and final one under new business, first reading to review and revise policy G, sections nineteen-hundred through fifty-nine-hundred.
Okay, um, so this is the first reading of this, and, um.
It's not as bad as it sounds.
It's not as bad, even though we have all these blue stickers. Um, so there are revisions for you to look at that Ms. Vanessa has uploaded for you of revisions that we made, so you don't have to thumb through.
Oh, good, thank you.
And so those are already there, and I have worked closely with the HR department, with, uh, Dr. Parker on this, and, uh, worked on it together before we did the revisions.
Okay, so this doesn't have the revisions, but what you upload in our packet does, okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Just cleaning up some of the forms.
All right.
We could use AI on this.
He's gonna use AI on that. There you go, work smarter, not harder, okay. All right, uh, public comment time, I'll open it up for any public comment at this time. Hearing none, uh, this concludes the, uh, open portion of tonight's meeting, do I hear a motion to move into executive session?
I'll move.
A second.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we'll take a five-minute recess.